This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Struble?
Here.
Tewalt?
Here.
Von Hayden?
Well?
Here.
Worthman?
Jean?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the August 7, 2017 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council listens to or conducts public hearings and listens to public input. Sometimes we hold public discussions, all which are designed to gather input from citizens who are here with us in chambers tonight, which help and gather input and ask questions, which help us make our decisions tomorrow night at our legislative session. For those of you who have attended the Plan Commission of late, we operate differently in that we take a public input on Monday nights and deliberate on Tuesday nights. So there will be no debate and decision-making tonight from this body. We do welcome those of you who are joining us tonight and are grateful to community television for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We have important items on our agenda, and I'll just review the protocol a little bit for those of you who want to make a comment, have a point that you need to make tonight. When I go through the agenda, I'll introduce the topic, and then there will be a staff presentation. Sometimes council has a few questions from staff that also help us understand the scope and the breadth of the item before us. After we're done discussing with staff, then the public is welcome to approach the podium one at a time, state your name and your address, and begin making your comment. We have found over the years that limiting the comment for each person to five minutes makes the meeting move along, it helps the meeting move along, and it makes it as fair for the first speaker as it is for the last speaker. So you will see there's a series of lights. A green light will be lit when you begin speaking. It will turn yellow when you have a minute left, and the red light means that your five minutes have come to a close. You do not need to speak the entire five minutes, but they are there if you need them. At the end, if I have to, I politely ask you to bring your comments to a close. Even at that, sometimes council members have questions for you, so if you linger at the podium for a minute, I can ask council members if they have a question for you. The whole point is that we want to understand what it is that you're trying to tell us. That's our main job tonight, and all that goes into helping us make decisions tomorrow night and protecting the common good and all that stuff. And lastly, if you don't, if you have something you want to say but you don't feel comfortable speaking, you may make a written comment on the blue sheets that are at the back of the room. If you write out your comment and leave it back there, we will get those comments by tomorrow's legislative session. So whether they're written or they're spoken, they're equally weighed as we try to make our decision tomorrow afternoon. If you have, if you need assistance or have further questions during the meeting, you may ask Ms. Merle, who sits right up here. She's very helpful and friendly, and generally a very nice person. So let's get going with our agenda. We have three public hearings and a public presentation. The first public hearing is regarding the city's intention to order the repair of sidewalk and curb and gutter at 45 locations throughout the city, all of which Mr. Solberg will aptly review. Mr. Solberg?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The public hearing tonight is for our annual citywide sidewalk and curb and gutter repair contract. Throughout the year, we gather complaints from citizens regarding trip hazards or drainage concerns that we have with sidewalk or curb and gutter throughout the city. This year is another year of that contract. We have 45 locations this year that consist of either sidewalk trip hazard concerns or sidewalk that was not constructed when it should have been in the past, resulting in a gap in sidewalks, or I can include curb and gutter that has deteriorated and presents a drainage concern. So this year, we have 37 locations throughout the city where we have trip hazards, and these are pictures of some of the complaints that we have throughout the city, where it's a pretty obvious trip hazard for the public. They call in, we tabulate those over the course of a year, and assemble a contract to address those. In addition to those 37, we did have eight locations this year where sidewalk was not constructed when properties were developed in accordance with council direction at the time the plat was approved or the development agreements were approved. So one location is along south Oakwood Hills Parkway, where there is sidewalk, a gap in the sidewalk system, where it was not constructed when this house was constructed. And then another is along Bullis Court off of Echo Valley Drive, where there are nine houses on this cul-de-sac. Two houses constructed sidewalk. The remaining seven did not construct sidewalk when the houses were constructed. We were alerted to this or became aware of this court. One of the property owners that has sidewalk, removed sidewalk to address some drainage concerns that they had on their property and correctly contacted the city to ask if they needed to install sidewalk because none of their neighbors had sidewalk in these two properties, the sidewalk doesn't go anywhere. So we went through and looked to make sure that we were giving proper recommendations and found when this plat was accepted for the subdivision in 2003, Bullis Court and Echo Valley Drive was ordered to have sidewalk. There was no deferral of sidewalk resolution presented or at that time or in the future. So the plat was approved and the development agreements were approved, including sidewalk along Echo Valley Drive and Bullis Court. With that, we are not, do not have the authority of staff to tell them that sidewalk could not be left out when it was ordered by a previous council, and we included the remaining parcels that sidewalk was not constructed at the time the houses in with this contract. So we have, in essence, this contract this year has 37 trip hazards and eight locations throughout the city where there are gaps in the sidewalk system. The contract that we have does allow the property owners to pay the cost of the repairs over 10 years in accordance with our special assessment policy, and it does allow the property owners, in accordance with state statutes, 20 days to either self-perform and construct the sidewalk themselves, or hire a contractor to either install sidewalk or address the trip concerns before we would include those in the city project. With that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes, thank you. Could you help me understand how the process of sidewalk complaints and how you kind of decide which ones to work on each year, or do you work on every sidewalk you work on as a result of a complaint received from a citizen?
We pretty much, the 37 that we had, those were 37 different phone calls that came in. So starting after this hearing tonight, we'll start taking calls for next year's contract, and we keep a file, and as the summer, as the next year's summer progresses, we start assembling the complaints that we have into another project such as this. Usually it's trip hazards on sidewalk. Sometimes we'll get it with curb and gutter. If a section of curb will settle and you have a bird bath or a water sitting in a street, we'll have complaints for that, but not as frequent as sidewalk. And then, to a lesser degree, we do get a number of complaints where there are gaps in sidewalk, where children or families are using the sidewalk, and then all of a sudden there's a house there and the sidewalk, for whatever reason, wasn't constructed. And then we include those in this contract as well.
And are there, is there ever a situation where you, where the city just identifies sidewalks that need to be repaired, or are all the projects that you work on, they're all because of calls that come?
That has been a discussion that we've had in the past about going out and looking for sidewalks, but it is, it would be an enormous task to do so and very much more costly than the $50,000 to $75,000 that we put together currently. So at this time, we respond to complaints that we get and try to address those before we go out and look for sidewalks on routes that aren't included in our CIP program. If we have our five-year program, then we look at all the sidewalks along those routes when we're doing the street work as well. But at this point in time, we do respond to the complaints, but we don't have a roving patrol going out looking for the trip hazards.
Councilmember Struble?
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. This subdivision was in 2003, you said?
Correct.
Is there, what's a normal, I mean, I know that was before your time, what's a normal procedure that we use to potentially check to make sure they all put sidewalks in when these subdivisions come through? Is there something a little bit done differently now with development agreements?
Well, typically, when you have a plat or a development agreement or both come through, developers will request, in instances more frequently with cul-de-sacs, that along with that plat, a deferral resolution is submitted as well. And at that point in time, before anything is constructed, it's deferred or it's included in construction. That did not occur with this, although it's my understanding that it would have been the practice at the time to include a deferral resolution. I'm not sure why it was not included at the time. It could have been with these horseshoe cul-de-sacs, there are sidewalks here, so there may have been a sentiment to try and include sidewalk everywhere at the time instead of not including those on cul-de-sacs with less than 750 feet. Typically, these sidewalks were included with the inspections for the, when they got their building permit and when they had occupancy, our building inspectors went out and made sure that the sidewalks were included when the home was constructed. I'm not sure why, why that wasn't the case with the other ones, but that's how we try to, when we have conditions, either with a development agreement, with stormwater conditions, or anything in particular, we try to work with our community development services to make sure that, hey, you know, don't give them occupancy until they satisfy their stormwater or so forth, so.
Thank you.
For the questions for Mr. Solberg. I see none, then, thank you. Are there members of the public who came tonight to speak about any particular sidewalk project? Mm-hmm, you can. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Michelle Sheehan, and my address is 4801 Bullis Court. So I am right here on this little map, and we bought the home in 2006, so it was after the development was established. These last two houses that have sidewalks are the newest built homes, so somehow they ended up with sidewalks. When we bought the house, it didn't have a sidewalk, but I am opposing the implementation of sidewalks in our cul-de-sacs for a couple of reasons. First, it's a really small cul-de-sac under 750 feet. It's a little less than 400 feet. There's no other sidewalks on cul-de-sacs in the neighborhood up this way that's not shown on the map. So some of those are Promontory Court, Oak Bluff Court, and Woodcrest Court. All of those are sidewalk-free. And we have, like Mr. Solberg stated, we have excessive water runoff and drainage that I feel makes adding a sidewalk impractical. We've had problems with our concrete driveways on the cul-de-sac. One driveway's been replaced, and then our driveway, we have to consider whether we do repair through mudjacking or replacement because of the water runoff issues. So I feel because of those water issues that are damaging our driveways, that adding additional concrete would just cause more problems and would be costly to upkeep. And then to keep consistent with the rest of the neighborhood where those cul-de-sacs are also sidewalk-free.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sheehan. Any questions for? Councilmember Struble has a question for you?
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan. I missed when you pointed out where your home was located.
Oh, okay. I'm right here, 4801 Bullis Court.
Okay, and you said you purchased in 2006. Were you the first owner or the?
We were the second owner of the home.
So as far as cost on something like this, would you have an option to go back to the prior owner? Usually on a condition report, they say if there's any special assessments that were required that were not completed?
Oh, I'm not sure about that.
Just a question, I, you may, because I think if you go back and look at your condition report, they do, if there was something that was supposed to be done that was not completed, that might be an option for you?
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Sheehan. Oh, Councilmember Tewalt, the wrong question.
Thank you. One question. Could you describe a little bit of the terrain behind your property, as we can't see that on the 2D?
Yeah, so.
Where the water's coming from?
Yep, so right up behind us is the South Oakwood Hills Parkway, and that is very steep, and Bullis Court is in a valley, so we have about six or seven homes right up above us that we get all of their water that comes down. And then this other road over here, that is Oak Knoll Drive, and again, it's like a steep hill, and it all just comes down onto our properties.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, one more thing. I do have a written position statement. Would you like me to leave that? Okay.
Was, were there other comments?
I live at 4818 Bullis Court. I am the one who removed my sidewalk. I am the second house from the end. We had purchased this home in 2012. It was built in 2009. We're the second homeowners. And when we purchased it, it's our first home, and we didn't know what a sump pump was or anything, and it was a dry summer, so we had no idea. But when the snow melted, and every time we got rain for the last several years, the water would drain off of our hill and just pool up where our sidewalk was, right next to our driveway. And eventually, when it did drain, it went in between the soil and the concrete, and it made about a 24-inch hole, just washing the soil away. Last summer, I noticed that the sidewalk was sinking along with our driveway, and I had a contractor look at it, and there was literally nothing holding up the right side of our driveway, and the sidewalk had sunk in about six inches, you know, a little swell about three feet long. And he told us that we had him look at it and a professional landscaper that he works with, and due to the positioning of our house and just the way our water drains, if we put a new sidewalk in four or five years from now, it would do the same thing. It would just seep through, in between the crack of the concrete and the soil, and continue to sink. So personally, we just removed it. Again, one, we had a sidewalk in front of our house that didn't go anywhere, because seven of the nine houses didn't have one. Our other neighbor was going to remove his sidewalk as well, but they've sold their house and moved out before we had our work done. And frankly, I've put in $20,000 in repairs from last July to this July due to water damage and issues at our house, and if we would have to pay for it, I'd, I don't know if we can afford it. But either way, if it continues to happen, which our contractor said it would, I just, I don't believe sidewalk is needed.
Thank you, Mr. Hungerholt. Any questions? You stated your position well, so we don't have further questions. Also, if you have a written statement, which you don't have to have, but if you do, you can leave it with Ms. Merle.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Benrud, 4535 Village Oak Circle. I own two homes that, one is completely on Bullis Court, and one is on the corner of Oak Knoll and Bullis Court. And this is a, well, there are a number of reasons why I fail to see why we're considering putting sidewalks here. One, in my opinion, there isn't a safety factor at all. I mean, there's almost no traffic, very little. Walking, pedestrian traffic is very minimal. You know, it's something else to take care of, something else that takes away greenery, and there is a very distinct water problem in that whole area, that whole hill, just inundates the ground with water, pushes up. We fought it terribly in the two houses that I had builders build for me. A sidewalk just exasperates that problem. It certainly doesn't alleviate it, makes it worse. It's an area that's going to be icy with water flow. And so I, again, I fail to, I just fail to see why, but even if there wasn't a water problem, I just fail why we want to do so much concrete in areas where we don't really have pedestrian traffic as a safety issue. I just don't see it. It takes away greenery, and it's something else that takes care of. It cracks. Sidewalk has a relatively short life, concrete does in general, and so I'm very much opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benrud. I see no questions?
Okay.
All stated. Anyone else wants to speak about their sidewalk? Or their neighbor's sidewalk? Okay, the chair will close item one then, and bring our attention to item number two on our public hearing agenda, which is a hearing on a proposed ordinance rezoning property located north of La Salle, adjacent to McKinley Road from TR temporary 1A to R1P, residential development, and adopt a general development plan for a single-family development. Mr. Ivory?
CNM Construction has submitted an application to rezon property located along north of La Salle Street at McKinley Road from temporary R1A to R1P, and then with that, a general development plan. The surrounding area consists of single-family homes, some vacant land, and North Star Middle School. This is the project area that's shaded here. North Star Middle School is located right here, La Salle Street, McKinley Road located right here. The Princeton Valley neighborhood is located to the east, with some additional housing to the north in this location. The Jingle Court smaller neighborhood is right here, and then some vacant land located just to the south. The same area with the aerial photograph, again, this is the site that we're talking about. La Salle Street located here, McKinley Road located right in this area here, the Princeton Valley neighborhood to the east, housing again to the north, North Star Middle School located here, and the vacant land located over in this area here. The proposed R1P zoning, the proposed R1P zoning allows for low-density residential development similar to the other residential neighbors in the area. The subdivision would be called High Clara Estates. It includes about 50 acres of land, and it includes 70 single-family lots, and then six outlots, five of those would be for drainage retention or drainage purposes. The comprehensive plan identifies the areas appropriate for low-density residential development, and then city water and sewer would be provided, extended into the development. The general development plan, that's part of the rezoning, proposes a 25-foot frontyard setback instead of the normal 30-foot setback. The purpose of the reduced setback is to move the homes further away from the rear of the lots where the slopes are quite steep. This is especially important near the top of the hill where the slopes approach or exceed 20% in grade. Applying the reduced setback for the entire plat in advance provides for a more consistent setback for the homes as they're developed. This drawing here shows the contours for the development. Down to the south is La Salle Street. This is where McKinley Road would come into the area here. The area consists of a ridge line that extends along this area here and then curves over into this area here. The land basically slopes off to the west in this direction, and then down to the southeast down in this direction in terms of the topography. The reduced setback that we're talking about here tonight has been used for other plats with similar ridge lines. And a couple examples is Freedom Drive, located just to the north within the Princeton Valley neighborhood, and then Highview Drive, located over by Old Wells Row, and that was a plat that was approved by the council about a year ago. The Plan Commission, the preliminary plat that creates the 70 lots for the single-family development, was approved by the Plan Commission last Monday at their meeting. In approving the preliminary plat, they indicated that the lots that are shown for the plat here meet the R1 standards in terms of lot size, lot width, and those types of standards. The access to the subdivision is from McKinley Road to the south here along La Salle. The city's engineering department has conducted a traffic analysis for the development and noted that the existing street system within the area has the capacity to meet the demands for the 70 lots. Also, as part of the preliminary plat, the street layout that's proposed for High Clara Estates proposes that the street would align with existing 33rd Avenue to the south between lots 33 and 34. Here's lots 33 and 34. The street system would loop back around and then has the potential to connect up with 33rd Avenue located right here. So the street would come in through along here, stop here at this point, but then would eventually connect up with 33rd located right here. In the interim, there would be a cul-de-sac that would be placed at this location here until, until that road was extended. Finally, engineering has looked at the preliminary plans for the engineering, for the, looked at the preliminary plans for the storm sewer for the project, and they have indicated that they would, drainage would connect with the existing system down at La Salle and McKinley located right here. Construction of the storm water for the subdivision would be done through a development agreement that would be viewed by the council at a later date, along with the other water and sewer and street utilities. As mentioned earlier, the Plan Commission approved the preliminary plat conditioned upon the recommendations in the engineering report that relate to the traffic, the grading, and utilities. If you have some questions on those, I'll try to answer those. If not, John Gensko is here, and he might be able to answer some of the utility-related questions. In terms of the rezoning and the general development plan before you tonight, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the rezoning to the R1P, and then also allowing the reduced setback of the 25 feet. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Councilmember Tewalt has a question?
Thank you, Council President. When was the traffic study done?
I don't have the specific date for that. That would have been done as part of the submittal of the preliminary plat, so probably within the last six weeks or so.
Okay. I'd like to ask that this, and I'll just put it out. I'd like to ask that this, and I'll just put it out there, but really, it's greatly concerned by the neighborhood with the traffic when school resumes, with children on their bicycles going through, as this is the only outlet for all of Princeton Valley. You know, going to Peterson and back is in a way, so I think it might be wise of us to think about that as a council, that we need to find out what traffic is like when school's in session. There is a middle school that they access and a grade school all coming out of that area. So across three twelve is the grade school, and down following around is the middle school, along with a lot of school buses and other, you know, that's where the school buses pick up right on McKinley. That McKinley is a short little stub of street at that point, and there's a lot of fear that that's not going to be a safe intersection as is. So, any, was that looked at? Do you know?
I guess I'll defer to John. Maybe he can respond to that.
I'm sneaking up behind you.
The traffic study was done just a couple of weeks ago, as Pat said, with the submittal of the preliminary plat, but what we look at is the traffic that's coming out of this particular neighborhood. And it was determined that during peak hour, traffic generated from this neighborhood is seventy-five vehicles per hour. Then we look at what's limiting, and in this case, it's the McKinley Road between LaSalle and the North Crossing, and that would have the capacity to handle that extra traffic. Now, there will be some modifications to the intersection. It'll be a cross-intersection. LaSalle will stay as a free-flowing street, but McKinley southbound and McKinley northbound will have stop signs. And so, there'll be some modifications for that, but the thought was the seventy-five vehicles during peak hour, additional vehicles, were not going to impact the stretch of road or the stoplight down at three twelve.
Can I follow? Can you explain the stop sign? Because I can tell you the seven AM traffic, seven fifty, seven thirty, it's very busy. So we're all going to stop right at McKinley?
No, LaSalle will be free-flowing. LaSalle will not have a stop sign. So people coming out at seven in the morning will still be able to make their left.
And people coming south will?
And people coming on McKinley, south to LaSalle, they will have a stop sign. And so, they will wait for the LaSalle people turning left.
I wouldn't have chosen that. I really think with real traffic, that's going to be problematic, and I've heard that from many, many of the constituents.
Your preference would be to stop LaSalle Street?
My preference would be, one, I'm going out of my domain. Rudolph, we put in a roundabout. We put in something to move traffic continually. Yeah, Rudolph, excuse me. That, something like that would have to be looked at, because it, and it gets going quick.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Jensko. Mr. Ivory mentioned the, he explained that there's going to be a cul-de-sac at the end there. I was kind of wondering if that was just a den or what. But he also said something about there's a potential to extend that. What does that mean? What would it take to extend that, the rest of that street?
Well, it would take the, let's go to this drawing. It would take the owner of this parcel to decide to bring the road up through the slope and then up to where this temporary turnaround would be. So there's one owner there that would build that road. Now, it's partially graded up the hill to about the width of what a road would be, but there's one last steep area that it would have to go to get up here, not unlike what's being proposed coming around through here. So it would be a steep road, and there's no indication that this owner here is inclined to want to do that, and that is also in the town of Seymour right now. So I wouldn't look for it to be something to happen in the very near future. It may not happen at all, because you've got power lines coming through here, and so a lot of that parcel is already, you know, he's not going to be able to put houses under the power lines, and so the return on investment may not be worth it to him to build that road up there.
Excuse me, one more question. And even if that did happen, where does Thirty-Third, I think you said, what does that?
This is Thirty-Third here, and it would come back to this intersection. It comes down to LaSalle and then back to McKinley. Right now, this whole area, the North Crossing comes through here. In fact, you can see it on here. You can see the road coming down, turning the corner, and coming back. Does not come out to three twelve. Or should it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensko.
I have a question for Mr. Ivory.
Mr. Ivory, a question. Councilmember Stone?
Mr. Ivory, just wanted to get a little bit of history on this portion. You said that it had been in our comp plan slated for single-family home development, and do you have a sense for why that hasn't happened before and is coming to us now?
We're starting to see some of these areas such as this within the city as lots become less and less available. We're seeing more infill development in some tracts of land like this.
So this is really an infill development project?
Yeah, similar to the Highview Drive development that we saw last year. That was an infill type of a development.
Thank you.
And I see no further questions. If you don't mind, we'll leave those up in case there are people who want to talk about. Are there members of the public tonight who came to discuss this item?
Really appreciate all you guys do. I'm not normally civically involved, and I think my generation needs to be more civically involved, so I appreciate the opportunity to kind of say what's on my mind today.
Could you begin by stating your name?
My name is David Mel, and I live in the Third Ward, where I enjoy the Putnam Park so much, because even though we're surrounded by infill, there's a place where people can go to get away. And this, what this place that we have, not we, but somebody has planned to develop, represents to me and a lot of people that grew up in Princeton Valley, as I did. My parents live at the very bottom of the hill. They already have water in their basement, and that's already a concern for them. And any more development in those hills would kind of make it a little bit more like the people that had problems with their sidewalks and stuff that live in the South Side. Very steep hills, very high-grade, and very dangerous in the wintertime to drive up and down those hills. Hasselwander's already developed so much of that area, and I wouldn't say taken liberties, but I've seen hills, houses almost slide down those hills, and they had to actually rebuild parts of them. So places where houses aren't meant to be, but nature is meant to be, things that have been there for so long and should continue to be there for so long. That's a place where I discovered who I was. I made forts in those hills. They had parks and recreation in the field on the Princeton Valley side where the power lines they were talking about. What's value to you citizens and people that make decisions? What's the value? Is it money? Or is it quality of life? Is it peace of mind? Is it a place that's quiet? This place connects to a middle school where people frisbee golf. This place connects to Pinehurst Hill where people like to ski, and there's great cross-country ski trails up top these ridges. There's woodpeckers that live there. There's foxes. I've seen bears in those hills. There's things, and as the more development, more infill keeps chipping away and chipping away, there's less places like this in Eau Claire. We live in a municipality where people can make decisions. We don't live in Altoona. We don't live in a place where they can just destroy nature and use it for their advantage. We live in a place where we should actually honor nature by protecting it. And I want us to look inside of ourselves and do that. I'm not attacking personally anybody that's set to make money off of this. I'm not attacking anybody that's set to live in these nice houses that they have in their dreams and their hopes, because I honor those dreams and hopes, but I also have dreams and hopes for those hills, and it does not involve destroying it. It involves setting it aside for a place where people can walk, and maybe having some steps go up to the tops of those hills so that people can get a good view and not have to purchase those views. Drainage concerns? I'm spiritually entwined with this place. I can't allow this to happen in good conscience. I wept when I saw how much was going to be destroyed and how much was going to be taken from me. That's the reason that I stay here, is my roots are connected to the land. It's not necessarily connected to the houses. We should be stewards. We should be caretakers, not abusers, you know? There's another lot in State Street that's set to be developed. Giant pine trees, places where animals live. I drove past a deer today outside of a person's house, and it looked at me as if to say, "I don't have a voice, but you do protect me," because there's not much place left for us to live. There's a lot across from Seymour that's getting developed right now. Seymour Road right alongside the river. That needs to be protected, too. I'm not just going to stop here and protecting these hills. We need to protect more than just that. We need to become people that actually care, and maybe you don't care. Maybe you do care, but I care enough. We need to get creative to find places for people to live. We need to build upwards instead of outward. We need to look to the younger generation that decided that, hey, maybe we need to renovate, instead of we need to destroy things that we have no right to destroy as human beings. We don't have a right to take stuff that's not ours, and that land's not ours. It's animals and trees. Those things are alive. We need to grow sustainably. We can't just cut off nature and then expect it to go away. You know, and I think we need to take responsibility and accountability. There's a housing and commercial bubble that's about to burst. There's tons and tons of empty buildings, and yet we still construct and develop more and more, and eventually, we're going to have a lot of buildings and not a lot of reasons to live here, and not a lot of places to escape mentally and spiritually from the everyday drudgery. And we can either look at a box like the box that I live in, in the Third Ward. We can either look at that as a box, or we can look at it as a box that traps us, or we can look at a box that protects us. And that's what I look at. Nature is protecting us, and we need to protect it, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mel.
Good evening. Cody Phillipsack, CNM Properties Construction. Myself, along with Adam Ashley, are the proposed developers of this. Just to give a little history of it, the Nelson family owned, owned this, all four parcels or whatever it is, for fifty years, I believe. Reached out to us, the daughters and the son reached out to us. When the parents passed away, they always knew that it was going to be developed. They didn't want to sell it to the people that were looking for it, I guess, or for years had wanted to. I always knew when they, when they heard there was opposition to this from some of the neighbors, they were actually really disappointed and pointed out to us that for years, they let people use the land, you know, their parents did, and just got to the point where they got sick of complaining about it or going after them. They knew it was their land, and they just got fed up with it. So they didn't say anything. So people have been using this land for years, but it wasn't necessarily their land to use. So I do, I do believe this is going to be a very good development, though, you know, those things aside. I'd like to point out some of the benefits of this. For one thing, it's very much needed on the north side. There is actually not a lot of houses sitting empty in Eau Claire. There is a huge shortage of housing, and especially on the north side. You know, we build a lot of houses every year, and a lot of people that want to live north side want to upgrade their houses, but there's just no lots out there. So I think that's a big part. The houses that'll be going in here will be a wide range of housing, anywhere from mid, mid-two hundreds all the way up to five hundred and above. They'll be very nice houses. Adam and I will be building most of them. But figured on an average value of three hundred thousand, it'll mean around two-point-eight million dollars in tax base for the city. The lots will vary from ten thousand up to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet. We will leave as much of the area wooded as possible. I mean, that's very important to us. I mean, it's very important for sales and everything, and everyone wants to live in a wooded lot, so I mean, you're going to keep as much wooded, and it's what makes the neighborhood. I mean, it's huge, huge, so we will be keeping that. I believe, I believe, and we actually have quite a bit of interest already in this, and a lot of people that live in this area are looking at lots. We have over ten people on our list already, and a lot of them are from that Princeton Valley area, just wanting to move out of the houses that are thirty, forty years old and move up. I believe the intersection at LaSalle will be actually made safer than what it is now. We've heard, we heard a lot of complaints of people flying down this road and making the corner both ways, both ways with no stop sign, just over and over and going really fast past that corner. The people on the, right on the corners complained about it. When they heard what we were doing here, they actually liked it more. What we had originally wanted, and this probably isn't the best map, but what we had originally wanted was to have the road over here, so it was a nice straight shot, looked better, cheaper. Everything else, it had this tree line here where we could have kept, but the city, working with the city, they wanted it moved to a four-way controlled intersection, and so now two of those ways will be stopping. People won't be coming up McKinley Road and making a corner at twenty miles an hour. They're going to have to stop and then turn. So I believe that's safer, and I believe the city, city staff believes the same. Same thing. We have worked with city staff extensively on this, getting all the lot sizes and density to where it has to be. The density compared to what we're going against in Princeton Valley. In Princeton Valley, in this section here, which we're right next to, there's a hundred-and-twelve residential lots and sixty-seven point-three acres or point-six acres per lot. What we're proposing on seventy-six lots and fifty-five acres are an average of point-seven acres per lot, so seventeen percent lower density. So we're well within the density. Another thing I've been hearing is water runoff, and there is, you know, there's a huge slope coming down here, coming down, and the people along here in Princeton Valley have been dealing with water issues since the development was put in. You know, I'm sure a lot of you have heard all the stories that they've had. Once we put this road in, all the runoff is going to stop coming down, pick up in the storm sewer, and then come down into the main pond, however they're designed. It's going to go from forty-six acres draining into Princeton Valley to just over four acres draining into Princeton Valley. So huge, huge difference, and I would be willing to bet these people along here are going to have less water in their yards. Plus, we will do things, especially Adam and I as the builders, where we are especially building twin homes over the years, and a lot of houses stacked in together. We have a lot of ways we can, we can make it even better from the runoff, from the rears of the roofs, doing, I mean, we can do berms coming up in the back. We can do little ponds in the back. We can do a lot of different things. So we'll make sure there isn't any water runoff from that. But I believe the most important thing about this development and why it's needed for Eau Claire is, Eau Claire is a great city to live in, and we have a lot of people moving into Eau Claire right now. I've been telling people that for quite a while. I deal with tons of people that are moving in to buy houses or build houses or rent houses. And so, before the count, or plant commission meeting last week, I went back and I tracked everybody that comes into the office that I meet with, and in thirty weeks, I had met with forty-six people about building. And I look back at how many of those people are from the Chippa Valley, just moving up into different housing, and there was thirty, thirty-six. The other ten people were moving in from Chicago, Minneapolis, all over the country. And we, we need good housing in Eau Claire, and I think this is a very important part of that.
Thank you. It's time to bring your comments to a close. Thank you for recognizing that. Questions? And I see none. Thank you, Mr. Phillipsack. Are there people who wish to speak tonight on this rezoning? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Eric Hendrickson, 3341 Jeffrey Lane. Um, I know that there was a lot of concerns that people had and I don't want to discount any of those up here. I just want to give a perspective of somebody that's actually excited about the opportunity of this development. Um, my wife and I and, and three kids currently live on the north side. Uh, my wife and I grew up on the north side. I actually, uh, grew up in Princeton Valley as well and I, I wandered the woods just like you did back there. Um, and, um, and the thing that I remember fondly about those times were, uh, was the neighborhood and was the, uh, the friends and the block parties and all that stuff. And, uh, I see this new neighborhood, um, having that same, uh, you know, uh, same thing for my, for my kids. Um, you know, Princeton Valley, we did look at lots in there, uh, currently. And, um, uh, there is the concern of the, the slope of the lots or the location of the lots up steep hills. Uh, so we weren't really able to find any lots, um, that fit our needs until we came across this. So, um, uh, obviously as our families expanded, we've, uh, um, started looking for a larger home. We weren't able to find one that fit all of our needs. And, and we didn't really want to, uh, sacrifice, um, and get something else that, uh, maybe we didn't enjoy as much or maybe our kids wouldn't enjoy as much. Um, so when we stumbled across this, uh, we immediately, uh, were excited about it and, and everything that, uh, that went along with it. So, uh, and, and the other thing to hit on is, um, the other developments, there are really no other developments like this on the north side. Um, you know, you do have the Princeton Valley, yes, but I mentioned the, the types of lots in there. Uh, but other than that, there's, there's really nothing that provided this type of family atmospheres, family neighborhood, uh, that we were looking for. So, um, so I know that there were some, uh, some concerns and assuming that, you know, we're able to get past those concerns, um, I, I really see this as being a really good thing um, for the north side and for Eau Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. I see no questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else? Okay, the chair then will close item two and, um, thank the presenters for their respectful and knowledgeable tone. Thank you, everyone. Um, our last public hearing tonight is on a proposed ordinance to amend the city code of ordinances to consolidate stormwater and parcel grading requirements in order to conform to state requirements. Mr. Jensko.
Thank you. Um, we're coming near to the end of a very long process. And I just have to put an exhibit up here because engineers need something to point at. And it kind of fits into the, the first point that I'm going to make is that, uh, this process has been to condense the city of Eau Claire's stormwater ordinances into one title. Currently they're spread through several of these sections. And with this, we'll be combining them all into Title 19 for stormwater and then referencing Title 19 in the other sections where they currently reside. It will also codify the DNR requirements that we've been enforcing as a requirement of our NS, MS4 permit for water quality standards. And, um, it makes reference to the rainfall amounts that were recently adopted by the DNR for Wisconsin counties that were reflected in NOAA, NOAA's Atlas 14 study that, uh, became effective in 2015. Uh, the proposed revisions are brought forward to address current best management practices in stormwater management and to meet objectives of the public utility section of the comprehensive plan. I first started talking about these ordinance revisions in 2004 with a presentation to the home builders. Uh, the most recent was July 20th, um, just a couple of weeks ago. That was the sixth one I'd made. There were also presentations in '07, '09, 2014 and 2016 to various, um, audiences. And so the plan commission was the seventh and this will be the eighth presentation, uh, on this. The Department of Natural Resources has reviewed these ordinance consolidations and found it compliant with our MS4 permit and with the DNR administrative code. The plan commission has reviewed it and recommended approval and the ordinance revisions are on your agenda tomorrow. Now what this does, uh, it doesn't change much. Um, it's generally currently our existing practice. There are some exceptions. One of the new revisions will be a requirement to submit erosion control plans for land disturbing activities greater than 15,000 feet. Now the reason, and that's a third of an acre. The reason that was, um, established, we didn't want to get into people that were tilling gardens in their backyard or putting sport courts or things like that. Single family and duplex construction still will fall under the Uniform Dwelling Code and so they won't fall under this. Um, but the intent is to cover larger grading activities where they're anticipating development to happen and they want to get the grading out of the way. Some examples where that's happened is on South London Road down near Gulf Road. There was quite a bit of clearing and grading done there. Highway 312 at Black Avenue, kind of, um, in the southeast quadrant back pine where the gas, um, station is up in there, the natural gas, uh, XL's station. But a, quite a bit of grading in there. And then there were some examples on the west side, the southwest quadrant of Vine and Clermont and also the southeast quadrant of, I think it was Truax, um, where Pizza Ranch fits now. That, that are, those, those areas then would have fallen into needing a specific erosion control plan instead of us enforcing it by saying, well, you can't dump bad things into our stormwater or into our storm sewer system. Sediment is bad things, you need erosion. Now we have something that says they have to submit the plan rather than do it by the seat of their pants. With the types of soils we have in town, most of where the new development is will just be silt fence. Some of the, um, hillier areas with the rock closer to the surface may require something more than that. Uh, another requirement is that, um, the licensed engineer responsible for the design of site plans will need to certify that the stormwater practices on those site plans were built according to the approved plans. And it requires BMP maintenance plans for private facilities. We have required that for gas station BMPs because it involves, um, fuel spills and such as that. But now we're starting to see more sophisticated biofiltration type devices with special plantings and engineered soils. And so we want the property owner that's going to inherit that, and most of these are on commercial site plans, that the, that the company will know what they have to do to maintain those types of BMPs. Um, not part of the ordinance, but will be included in the 2018 budget is the schedule of fees and licenses. There will be a permit review fee similar to other site plan submittals that go along with that. And, uh, the amount, um, will come up through your budget process. It's currently anticipated at about, well, at $140, which is what we're currently, the fee for development agreement reviews. It's the base fee and then there's a multiplier that gets put onto that. As the plots get bigger and bigger, the review fee gets bigger. Well, this is just the base fee without the multiplier. And then the, the last thing really to note is that, uh, it clarifies rainfall amounts. There's really three storms that we look at during the course of the year. The first is in the spring and often in September too, when you get rain on snowmelt or you get rain on saturated soils in the upper Chippewa River basin that causes our river flooding. Uh, this doesn't address that. But, um, the other rainfalls that we use for determining detention facility sizing and stormwater conveyance, that's what I was referring to before with the Atlas 14, um, study that changed those rainfall amounts. Interestingly with those amounts, our smaller storms stayed the same or actually went down a little bit. And the larger storms, about 25-year return period or 100-year, those went up about 10%. And so we've been using those numbers because it's been required by the DNR since 2015, but this puts that into our ordinance. The three-year event that we use for, um, peak rate runoff control release rates does not change. That study didn't look at the three-year rate. And the two-year and the five-year were essentially the same as what we were currently using. So we said the three-year would be two. And most of our older system was designed for that three inches of rainfall. So we stayed with three inches for the three-year event. And then the water quality storm continues to be the 1959 Minneapolis rainfall year where they actually modeled that year of rainfall through the BMPs to see how they perform. Having said that, I'll stop and if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer what I can.
Questions for Mr. Jensko? Got to love engineer speak, you know? Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Jensko, is this, uh, this applies not only to new construction, but also to instances where Public Works is redoing an area street or something like that as well? Potentially?
Yeah, if, if, uh, maybe a better example would be like if we're going to go in and build a regional stormwater pond, we would design it to this criteria. And, and really what you're looking at is the, the rainfall amounts for designing our conveyance systems. And those, and we've been using these amounts for that as well.
I think if I could just thank you for all the work on this. I know we had a chance to touch base, I think it might've been a half year ago or so, but, um, just this idea that, uh, cities are seeing flooding in areas that they didn't normally see flooding. And a lot of that's to do with, um, stormwater that's, you know, increasing. Like you said, rainfall events that are just, um, shorter duration, but a lot more water. Um, and I think, you know, this is hopefully going to address some of those issues, some of those problems moving forward, so.
Yeah, and, and one follow-up comment on that. Um, one of the things that we've noticed over these last couple of years is we're s- we're getting more drainage complaints now than we did a few years ago. But people don't realize that for a period there, around 2010 or so, we were actually in a drought condition. And what we're returning to now is more than normal. And people are forgetting what it was like before the drought. And we had four or five years of drought and now it's getting wet again.
Other questions? I did have one for you. I see that in a conservancy district now, um, you need, uh, we allow a stormwater management by conditional use? In conservancy districts? Section two, chapter 1808?
I believe that was in there before. Which page number are you referring to?
Uh, in my packet, it's page 28. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to, to cause any, uh, you know, kerfuffle, but it seems like in a conservancy district, it probably is a good thing to have stormwater management, right?
Yeah, I, I think you're referring to 1845 020. Is that what it was?
Um, 1808.
Oh.
Right above that, section two, 1808. Anyway.
Oh, yeah, what that is, the, the change there is to add G, stormwater facilities, that those are allowed in those areas. Yes.
Yeah, by conditional use, which means they go through a little higher scrutiny. And that's probably a good thing. And they should.
We'd like to think we designed them the way they should be, but there's a lot of different ways to skin a cat and other, or design stormwater facilities and there's multiple ideas.
And that would be the public sector that's designing the stormwater facility or not always.
Um, typically for developments, yeah, like the one that you just saw, there's a string of stormwater facilities that will come down that road. They decided to put multiple facilities. Now we haven't seen the final design, we just know what they're talking about, to put multiple facilities so they can hold the runoff rate back and have smaller pipes. We actually like that better because if one fails and you have five, well, then you have 20% more flow. If you only have one and it fails, then you have all that flow coming. So that's a good thing. And, but in development agreements, they design them for the reg-, the broader regional ones that we did like after the 2000 rainfall event, those we design or we hire our own consultants to hire to design them.
I, I just meant to kind of bring that to the forefront to see that, what a complete job you did as far as even recognizing areas where a conditional use permit is appropriate and needs to be reapplied or something.
Well, thank you.
So, uh, it's, um, it's really good. It's, we, it's really good to see that our city works like that, so thanks. And I see another question for you.
Thank you, Council President. Are we looking at, or are they measuring water tables now? Are they seeing an increase in our water tables? Does that play into any of this? You know, we, we, we see, um, the conversation and hear the conversation. And I don't know if that's something that you guys are actually looking at and verifying. Are the water tables raising, rising in Wisconsin or in our area or?
Well, I think the way I would answer that, and no, I've not looked at any specific studies. I know that as we do our city construction projects near the river and the university is seeing it now with their, um, their, um, campus stuff that they're doing with Garfield Avenue is that as the river comes up and down, the soils are so porous that it's influenced by the level of the water. I know in parts of the state, because we were in the drought, that we're actually seeing groundwater tables come back to where they were.
To normal.
I'm not aware of any cases where the groundwater is higher, but I can't speak with authority. I, I don't know. I've not heard of any, but.
Thank you.
And I see no further questions and we appreciate your presentation, Mr. Jensko. There are members of the public who came or wish to, uh, make a statement about our stormwater, our new stormwater code. Seeing none, the chair closes our public hearings and, uh, next I will introduce a public presentation which lies somewhere between, um, public hearing and, uh, public discussion. It's a presentation that we do in public. So council members will certainly be able to make comments or ask questions. It's, um, it's not really, um, a public hearing, so to speak. So we'll go forward and see how much interest there is. And if I have to gavel anybody or anything, no, don't worry. So our public presentation tonight is on the Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library Building Feasibility Study and Space Needs Analysis by the Executive Director of the library, Ms. Pamela Westby.
Good evening. Council President Kincaid, city council members and city staff, thank you for having us tonight to present the findings of the library's space needs analysis, which is really the first step in gathering input from the community and planning for the future. There are two key individuals that I'd like to call up to present that information to you and that is our library assistant director, Mark Trundle, and Mr. David Drews, our consultant with Zimmerman Architectural Design Incorporated. They will present a summary of the report and there will be time for questions after.
Thank you, Pamela. Reimagining the public library of Eau Claire. The Ellie Phillips Memorial Public Library facility was constructed and opened in 1976. Zimmerman Architectural Studios was selected earlier this year to create a building feasibility study and space needs analysis. The resulting report provides a vision for the future of this library. The library's location in downtown Eau Claire attracts nearly 1,000 daily visitors who come to continue to learn throughout their lifetime, use collaborative spaces, access diverse materials, discover new skills and talents, explore creativity and innovation opportunities, build community connections, advance literacy skills and so much more. Oops, sorry. The purpose of this study was several-fold. It advances the library's mission to promote lifelong learning, create collaborative spaces, support open access to diverse materials and resources to enhance the quality of life in the community. The study also helps achieve the library's Forward Thinking strategic plan, which called for a space needs analysis. It seeks to preserve the library's rich history as a focal point of downtown Eau Claire and maintain the library facility as a public investment. And with that, I'll turn it over to David Drews, who will delve more into the report.
Yeah, thanks. Um, the study consisted of, uh, three main phases that were somewhat concurrent. So, uh, we started out with an evaluation and at the same time envisioning, uh, what the program should be. And then- And then, the third part was looking at alternatives. That was spelled out actually in the RFP, that we were to look at alternatives for a completely new construction, remodeling, or something in between. So, for the process, I guess I need to do this, so. Okay. This is touchy. What am I doing wrong? Yeah, okay. So for the process, we gathered the original drawings from the 1975 drawings for the original construction and the remodeling back in 2009. We made numerous site visits, we actually had two consultants as well, our structural engineers, and CRBPS with Chad Rickel, who's an Eau Claire resident. We modeled the facility in computer, computer aided design and building information system. During those evaluations, we met with staff from the city that's very familiar with the history of the building and what improvements have been made and maintenance issues with the facility. We met extensively with the library staff, with the administration, with the board, and we got input, I should say, and also the steering committee, we got input from the public. I spent a day at the library, just taking input from people as they came through along with a staff member, and then there was also a survey that the library and our firm co-designed that was online, and got over 550 responses. Very insightful, your public had a lot of really good insights, and a fair amount of consensus, not complete consensus, but a lot of consensus. And then, one of the important tools we did in figuring out the space was there's a Wisconsin DPI, sort of programming guide, it's a spreadsheet that lets you put in various variables, and your response to them that helps you figure out about how big your library should be and how much space you should divide into different pieces. So that was a big part of the process. So as far as what we found in the evaluation, our structural engineers, we had heard that there was, that the library had been designed for a third floor, and we found that indeed it was designed for a third floor to 1975 standards, but since then seismic loads have come into effect, but it still can be expanded in additional floor under current codes. There are some repairs that need to be made to the retaining wall, but generally, the structure's in excellent condition. CRBPS, which is our consultant based in Eau Claire here, did a study of the, all the systems within the building apart from the structure, and they did a very thorough report. One of their reports goes over 100 pages, analyzing the entire system and what needs there might be. In some, they found that there are, not surprisingly, a number of systems that need renewal, is their term, over the next years. They projected those costs out and set priorities over the, through 2022. And that report, those costs that they identified total about $7 million in maintenance and renewals. Now, if we were to do a renovation or addition, most of those costs would be, you know, included within the renovation and addition, as opposed to the maintenance. So for instance, the roof really needs some repair, but if we had another story, there's no point in repairing the roof right now, as long as it's done in a timely manner. Current suitability of the library, this is sort of a character, character in how well it fits the program right now. There's a lot of feedback from both the public and the staff in my own evaluation, and some of the key items was that you could really use more daylight, some more windows, better accessibility in a number of regards, more options for a quiet study and working together. Right now, those are often in conflict, people talking somewhere heard throughout the library. More flexible meeting spaces, improved layout, especially in the basement. The basement was redone in 2009, and the staff really appreciates the space that they have down there, but the flow is not very efficient, so ideally, there would be more efficient layouts. And then, some of the finishes and the lighting could really use updating. As far as reimagining the library program, the conclusion is that ideally, we would have 90,000 to 100,000 square feet for a library for the community of your size and meeting the recommendations of the DPI spreadsheet. We also came up to a number similar to that by looking at the current spaces and what additional spaces would be helpful. So what do you get with that extra space? I'll just touch on a few of these, you can read them, but one of the key things that came out of the survey was that people did not want to see the number of books reduced, and there was really a lot of support for maintaining or even enhancing the collection. At the same time, we really could use more space for that collection to make it more accessible. People have a hard time with bottom shelves and high shelves, and it would be nice to open things up. So more space for books, and one of the big items was just more places to sit, read, and meet, and maybe some unconventional spaces as well. Another need that I was sort of surprised to see, you don't have any small study rooms, which is very unusual for a library of this size. Those would help meet a number of needs on literacy and tutoring and the like, to have some study rooms. The current play and learn space, which is an early literacy thing, is very, very popular. It could ideally be bigger, but under your current space, you don't really want to be giving up collection space within the children's library to accommodate that. So you could expand that without sacrificing other needs in that library. Other ones, the dabble box could be expanded and maybe some other similar maker spaces, and maybe I'll leave it at that. So, a whole list of potential improvements. Some of the other objectives include qualitative ones, so better connections to nature and daylight and view. It's kind of interesting, in the children's library, just as an aside, there are just three sections of window where there, you could have quite a bit more. So that whole program area and the whole south wall doesn't have windows, but it could have windows. So there could be a lot more windows, even without changing things there. And people really appreciate the places where you can look out to the river, but there could be, there could be more of those. Comfort could be improved, that's part of actually the HVAC analysis and the maintenance, modernizing facilities in the restrooms, the acoustics issue of, again, quiet versus conversational, and then some safety concerns. Outside, there's a lot of support for trying to create some usable outdoor spaces, maybe on roof terraces, but also at grade, improving parking and access, and then making the entrance more obvious and maybe a more attractive building from the outside. So we looked at several alternatives. One is basically just remodeling the existing building. So if we only remodel the current occupied space, that's about 61,000 gross square feet, which is, you know, roughly two-thirds of what we think you would ideally have, so it obviously falls short. We could add windows, we could do some other things, but it would not expand the square footage. It's also the idea that you could take that existing covered parking area and convert that to usable space, which could have windows and could be pretty nice, but again, that brings you up to 66,000 to maybe 68,000 square feet if there was a small addition, so still short of the target. Another approach is to expand and renew the library. So one version of that is to do the expansion underneath in the parking, as I mentioned on the previous option. So convert that covered parking into usable space with windows, and then add the additional story that the structure will support. So this would keep the same footprint of the building, expand upward, and possibly, in the illustration I have there, add a little entryway, sort of enclose the bridge and adjacent to the bridge to create a new entry. If you did all of that, you'd be at about 92,000 square feet. Another version of expanding and renew would be to build out over the, what I kind of think of as the moat, out towards the front entry plaza and Eau Claire Street with additional library. This would give you a bigger footprint on the existing first and second floor, you would build a third floor as well, and then the space underneath, which would not have much daylight, could be basically, as a result, you'd have expanded covered parking. So not that that was a primary motivator, but it would be a result of doing this. And that would get you around 100,000, 100, 2,000 square feet of enclosed space. Now, both of those, and those numbers, that's the maximum if you didn't, if you built the entire additional story without any roof terrace at, you know, one of the lower levels, so the final amount could be tweaked. And then the final alternative, which was part of our charge, was new construction. So obviously, that would be the 90,000 to 100,000 square feet that we'd be looking for. You could idealize, you know, idealize the design within the constraints of the site, whether it was this site or another site. In our, in my feeling, is the existing building's pretty sturdy, and it's not considered environmentally a green strategy to throw out the expended energy in the building, so this would be the most expensive option, and it doesn't seem particularly green, so it's not high on my list, but we're not making recommendations here. So you could idealize the building, but it would be at a cost, at a cost. So in summary, we looked at five options, remodeling only, or remodeling with a slight expansion. Either of those would be significantly short of the amount of space that we think you need. There are two expansion options. One is staying within the existing footprint and reclaiming the parking area, going up a floor, that gets you to about 92,000 square feet. The other option also adds the floor but expands out, gives you a new facade on Eau Claire Street, which may become a plaza, I understand that's been planned for quite some time, and to the entry plaza. And then finally, you could replace the whole library at like 92,000 square feet. So that's the quick summary of our findings. And I should say, the people of Eau Claire were great to work with, and I was really impressed, I read every one of the comments on the 550-some surveys, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of creative thinking and a lot of thoughtful responses and concerns, not only for their own concerns, but for what mission the library can play in the community, and a lot of appreciation for what the library really does. So, any questions?
Thank you for sharing the insights and complimenting our community. Are there questions for the consultant? We'll start with Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much for the work that you did in coming to our community to help us think about the future of the library. My question is for you and maybe for the library director as well. Just, my question has to do with a little bit of programming, and we don't need to get into the weeds of that, but knowing, I just know it's more of a programming question, in regards to future programming that would need future space for folks who are experiencing low economic status. I know that sometimes our library is a place for people to go who may not have a home during the daytime, and in other communities, sometimes a library can be a bridge to many, and in our community, many social services. So I'm wondering, as you reimagine the future of our library, what possibilities might be there to meet the needs of citizens who really are looking for resources to connect in the community?
It's interesting that you bring that up. That was something that a number of your citizens mentioned in the, in the survey response of creating that bridge to social services and the like. And one of the ways that can be done, and it's really more of a programming issue, but in terms of space, having these meeting rooms and maybe even providing an office or two where representatives from various social service agencies or other agencies can come in at certain times, that could be one avenue that could be fostered by some additional facilities.
And I, and you probably know this, that we, we have no discrimination on who we serve, and so we do serve people of great diversity currently, and having that extra space to create kind of a private conversation would mean a lot to a lot of individuals, and for staff as well.
And Councilmember Mitchell has that question.
Thank you. And I'd like to expand on Councilmember Emanuel's question. I noticed that was one example in your report of what I thought was a new programming idea or something that maybe you aren't doing right now. But when you talk about reimagining the library building, is what you've done, but how did you look at reimagining the library itself, the programming in the library? In addition to that example, what are, I realize that you have, that there are maintenance needs, but what is the basis, or what are the things that you want to do in the future in the library that any one of these projects will help fulfill?
Do you want to take that?
Go ahead.
Well, Pamela can also join in, but the strategic plan calls out a number of those, I think in Mark's slides that he talked to, there's some of those. So some of the things that'd be enabled by this, so the meeting rooms, for instance, the small group rooms would allow tutoring or, you know, study groups to happen without interfering with people who are trying for quiet reading, for instance. So that's, that's one example of those spaces. Also, just the program rooms right now are pretty limited in some regards. So the Eau Claire room, for instance, which is the largest of the meeting rooms, the current library has a 25-foot column grid wherever you go. So it means that a larger program room, for instance, like the Eau Claire room, is long and narrow, and there's really a limit to how many people you can accommodate in that room and still have it be usable program. So in the new library, we'd be able to accommodate larger, larger programs. There's also, there's a lot of support for places that are sort of a coffee shop or like a coffee shop, where you can, you know, read, study, converse without bothering other people, but sort of more, a wider variety of places for people to engage in the resources that the community has to offer. There's also a lot of support for community connections, partly for the social services, as you mentioned, but also in these maker spaces and the like, where people can use the library as a space to share their knowledge with other people. So that's sort of on the program side. I don't know if you want to add?
Just to add that what we've found with the dabble box is that people really enjoy interact, multi-generational programming has really taken off, and it's very popular, and having those spaces where grandparents and, or senior folks and children, maybe I should say, young people and young at heart can interact and learn from one another and connect is another area. You touched on tutoring, but also basic learning, literacy classes, learning English as a second language, or a third or fourth language, is also an area that we would like to explore, and.
Well, there are also some small things that come to mind with the intergenerational. So, parents or grandparents who come with their children would like to just have someplace they could sit while their children are, you know, reading or at storytime or doing the play and learn. So there are some improvements like that. Or, right now, the children's program, there's sometimes an issue where if you get more people than expected, it needs to move down to the Eau Claire room. Just some minor design changes or redesign could let it stay in the children's library and be more flexible about the number of attendees to that.
Sometimes we can't predict what the attendance is going to be, so being able to expand easily with movable walls and be able to spill out into the public space would be a... be a real benefit. There are other things, but they're not coming to my mind.
That carries me.
We'll, we'll let you think a little minute and see if, I see there's another question. So if more comes to mind, that, that's just fine. Councilmember Stroh.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wesby. I think the question's for you potentially. What, there's a lot of these options are fairly costly. What, what parts of these are maybe wants versus needs? And if you, and maybe a second part of that question is, this year in the CIP, I think for the first time in a long time, we included a lot of money for the library. And how, how will that affect what is happening here? Maybe if you can help on those?
Sure. I'll address the, the second one first, if you don't mind. The CIP projects are actually part of all of the maintenance systems that need replacing in, in this report. So they would be rolled into those. So they're, they're not new outside of what's in the report. So we had preliminary reports back when we put together the CIP proposal. And as David Drews went in deeper to the systems and identified more systems, then we, that price went up, of course. So went from four, $4 million to $7 million. Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then as far as needs and wants, I think that may be something that you want to address because that is based on evidence and standards by the state of Wisconsin. So the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction provides calculations of space recommended or guidelines for public libraries based on their population served.
So it's partly the population served, but also the target number of items in the collection, meeting rooms desired, and things like that. So it's basically, it's, it's very flexible. You could, you know, do improvements with, with less space, and you could justify maybe even more space. But this seems to be, you know, about right, if you're being aspirational, to be, you know, to really look to the future and not, not just sort of get by. I also looked at where other communities are, and obviously, there's a wide, there's a wide range. But, and I should say, the DPI no longer rec, no longer says if you have 100,000 people, you should have 100,000 square feet or something like that. They, they used to do that. But, so it's not a fixed per-population measure by itself. But just looking at other libraries, there are quite a few that are on a large, are larger per capita served. And it's only when you get to some really big places that they're kind of smaller. And that's just at the current, you know, whatever their facility happens to be. So it seems to be, you know, the numbers seems reasonable, looking at like three different ways of looking at it.
I think too, that it's, it's something to look to for the future. Any project of the magnitude that we're looking at here will take years to plan and implement. So, you know, it wouldn't be out of the question that five years down the road, it would, it would, that it would take five years to implement. So tonight, we're not, this is not a budgetary request, just an information, updating you on our findings, and really trying to open the conversation up for guidance. We're really looking to you for guidance, where you'd like to see library services be in Eau Claire, and how they affect the community. Because we do serve everyone, regardless of their age, gender, ethnic background. We're open seven days a week, nine months out of the year. We're open till nine o'clock at night, four days a week. We're there for people throughout their lifetime. And that's really impactful on a community, to have good services and reliable services. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, I did. Just want to make sure we weren't going to be spending CIP money on something that potentially, like a roof, if you're going to put a third floor on, then we wouldn't be doing something like that. And if I just could have a follow-up to Mr. Emanuel?
[laughing]
I'll pass. Thanks.
If you have to ask it, you can ask him next round. Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, Council President. I think it was mentioned, or maybe I read it somewhere, 1,000 people a day, is that right, that attend the library? Is that, which is amazing to me. I mean, I think that's great, that there's that much participation. Is that number steady over the years? Is that growing? Is that lower? Where does that stand? And then compared to other communities of our size, is that, is there potential there, obviously, with a larger library, that we're going to see continued growth?
Yes, I would, I would say that it is on the high end for a community of our size. It has stayed at that level for maybe the last three years. I would have to look back on those stats to give you a better, more accurate answer. And libraries that expand or renovate do see a big surge in attendance and circulation, particularly for the next three years. And then oftentimes, it plateaus or it levels off. I really see the library as being a economic driver for downtown Eau Claire because of the number of visits that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell? Oh, Councilmember Tiwol.
If I may. Thank you, Council President. Just a general comment I would like to make. I, I serve on this board as the council representative, and I'm excited. And I've come to learn, as we grow in Eau Claire, we also age. So we've talked about on other issues. We have curbs to repair. We have infrastructure to repair, and that's what we're looking at here. So as we build, we also rebuild. I do want to say, as also, I work in education, the library fills a spot that the educational institutions do not. They do not serve those hours. And when they have offerings or programs, they are very niched for search and purposes as designated by their function. And so this is the most broad-based access that our citizens have to wonderful resources. The engagement is excellent, and we're seeing it with the builder space, with the other things, that people are now interacting in a, in a new way. And the intergenerational is really refreshing to see, how people learn from others, how they transmit cultural knowledge, how they transmit sensitivities, as well as technical skills or hands-on. So I, I think it was a well-done report and research. It obviously shows us the breadth of it. But I think it's something we have to look at as a city. You know, we could have probably done a pool that's only the size of 12 by 12, but it would be a little congested. So somewhere you kind of stretch and push and find what's right size. So we're a town that works, and we'll work this out. But I just thought they did a really nice job on this. The library board did a great job.
Thank you for those insights. Other comments, questions? Councilmember Mitchell?
Given the changes in technology and people's reading habits and researching habits and so forth, have you, did you, have you thought about having fewer books or no books at all, or not as many books? Speaking as a person who always wants it in paper, this is not, I'm not the best one to ask this question, but, but, but really, as, as things are changing in that way, have you looked at a design that, that used a lot of that stack area for other things?
Yeah. We've, we've called very aggressively in our, particularly the adult collection, to find more space for reading and study and, and small group out in the open space. There's obviously no walls that we've added. But we think that it would be a mistake to eliminate paper and, and books. We, that's still our number-one circulating item. And our numbers dropped for a, a number of years, and now they're starting to turn around. So I think that initial romance with digital books and items, the honeymoon is somewhat over. Or it's a combination of both digital and print. So I don't know if you have any more comments about that?
I would just say that having read the survey reports, there were, there was a significant number of people who basically said, "Bring back the books." And maybe in the ones that were called. And I think maybe the more balanced, maybe, the more balanced comments along those lines pointed out that the sort of primary function that the library provides, that nobody else does, is access to materials, excuse me, whether it's in print form or some other form. And they wanted to make sure that that core mission was preserved. So one of the things that expansion would let you do is maintain, you know, that core mission of having books and other, other media, and still do some of these other, meet these other objectives.
A balance. And I think the, the one-book-one community is a good example of how books are still really, the, the love of, of books is still, exists in Eau Claire. We purchased 200 copies, and they were, you know, there was waiting lists for them. So, and continues to go out.
Councilmember Klinkammer.
Thank you. After I got aced out of my position on the library board, I do have some things that I would like to say about the library. In our opening agenda sheet here, it refers to the library as a cultural, cultural and educational landmark. A young man earlier spoke about the importance of open space in terms of what it meant to him as being part of that neighborhood or that community. I think that the statement about a cultural and educational landmark is a little bit of an understatement. I, I think a library, ours and any library, is a reflection of the commitment a community has to the social, educational, intellectual, cultural health of our community, of its community. And going, having gone from a position before I served on the board of the library of thinking that computers are now going to be the answer, that libraries were kind of shifting to a different, less illuminated position in our culture, I came to realize that the library and its services that it provides are evolving. They're changing. And I think the importance of the library is going to continue to become more important as the services that it provides for our citizens continue to evolve and develop. I, I think it's important that we look at this kind of a analysis of our library to realize that we can't, we have to plan for this, because it's too important for us as a community to keep this entity, this institution vibrant and vital.
Thank you. Other comments or?
Before I ask you a question, I just wanted to provide a little bit of input also, in that I'm delighted that the book is still dear to us. Particularly, the rare book, which we, we lost yet another independent bookstore, or well, the only one we have, really. And somehow, if the library could become a depository or a, a guardian of the rare book, would be something I would envision. And just, secondly, that I participated in the Space Needs Study many years ago, in which we asked the branch question, should we have them? The study concluded no. And I think that has borne out well, and I am glad to see that it's not a question in your current study, partly for the reasons Councilmember Klinkammer was alluding to. As far as, in our size city, the library is a landmark, a destination, a place that can't be repeated in a branch that's, you know, behind a grocery store or something. So I am happy that you weren't contemplating branches, and that the library, then the building itself becomes a place of significance. And I think that model has served our city well heretofore. So those are just a couple insights, since you asked us for them. Then I just wanted to ask, I see that you do have staff and library board people. Are, are they prepared or expecting or wanting to make some comments tonight? Or do you, do you know?
They're here out of support, unless, unless I'm not knowing. Oh, wait, how's someone?
Sure.
Who will take you up on that?
Okay, sure.
Hi. My name's Brenda Brant, and I'm a member of the library board. I'm also a past president of the Friends of the Library. So obviously, I have a vested interest here. But I've, to address the technology question, I work in a technical field. I'm a data analyst for a huge corporation. I work with millions of records every day on consumer data. And I really believe that the library is about more than the books. There is a part of our community that is being disenfranchised because they don't participate in the internet. They don't have the means to do it, either financially or just educationally. My mother's 73 years old. She does not use the internet. She does not have any other vehicle for reading or communicating with people but the US mail and books. So, and her telephone. But I want, feel like I have to speak for those people because I think we're becoming a society of technology haves and have-nots. And the library provides a tech, lots of tech services, but one of the ones that gets positive feedback the most is a service where they will show people how to use their e-reader, show people how to use their mobile phone, show people how to interact with these devices, that a lot of us are here and we are professionals and we use them, and we don't even think twice about it. But I just wanted to make sure that that point was made. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making it. Counsel, did you?
No, just a comment I'd like to make.
Oh. Councilmember Tiwol has a comment spurred by your comments, I think.
I, I do. And I want to say just something about technology that we don't think about. Since we use it as a general term, Google brings us from wide to narrow. Once I tell Google I like to make muffins, my pages appear all about muffins, all about cooking, all about cups. When I go to the library, I say, "I want to cook." Next to it, I see another book. Next to it, I see another area. So in the library, we go from a narrow to a wide. And really, when you think about history, what was one of the great treasures? Alexander the Great's library. Knowledge is amazing. So when you can have the library that lets us expand our knowledge, rather than tunnel us and only to our special interests that we have, and how else would we go it? I'm reading a book that I got from the library, Dadland. It, it's amazing. There it was, just laying in front, and I, it called to me. I won't give it away. I won't give it away. Good book. I'm going to cry, I'll end.
Thank you, Ms. Brand.
Hello, City Council, Bob Ironman. I'm, I'm in my third year, starting my third year as the, as a member of the Eau Claire Library Board, and the issue I'm honored to be the, the president. This place is hopping. It's, it's really, it's been really exciting right from the get-go. Back to Councilmember Strobel's question about needs versus wants. The first thing that started up when I became a member was a strategic plan process to really try and envision what the library should be, could be, and hopefully will be. And it was a very well-done process coordinated by a guy from a group called WILLS, which is a statewide library support system. And the staff was involved, public was involved, the board was involved. Really a good process, and I think that's been the foundation for moving ahead with this Space Needs Plan. And, but the other thing I think is that as soon as we began to implement that, and a lot of it has begun, immediately, space issues began to show up as being problematic. And as we try and do some of the things that we want to do, or we reach out into the community, take books out, you know, the book bike, books on buses, all those kinds of things. All those things require some space at home to take care of some of those things. They're great programs, important, I think. I think it's really a way to meet the needs of the community and, and also expand the library's reach. But the space really is needed. It's, it's not, this isn't a want. There are some things in there, you know, art studios, music studios, some of these kinds of things. Do we really need that? I think that's a good question. But, but just some square footage on the ground, it's pretty critical. We're really short, so that's, yeah.
Thank you, Lieutenant Ironman.
Hi. Rob Reidam, also on the board. And just a real quick point. I teach literature classes over at the university and adolescent literature, and I came across a really surprising study one time just this year that showed that the preference of teenagers is print over ebook, which I thought was surprising too. And when you see as many young people using the print materials and younger kids, as we also use the picture books and everything like that too, it's not just baby boomers using the libraries anymore. I'm a member of the American Library Association too. And libraries across America are still as vibrant as ever despite the internet and the belief of a lot of people that the internet is replacing the library. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for, for your comments. We can feel that there is affection and reverence in this room for this important institution. So we will hear more as your plans unfold and participate with you in seeing what we can do to make them what they're supposed to be. Thank you. And any other comments? We end our, our meeting on a positive note tonight, but there being no further business to come before this body. On a motion by Councilmember Tewalt, seconded by Councilmember Weld, we are adjourned without objection.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. New Works is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Please stand for the Pudge of Allegiance.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
King Cade?
Here.
Klinkhammer?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tewalt? Von Haden?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
John?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the August 8, 2017 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this responsibility by working with citizens and collaborating with staff and reading the considerable amount of materials in our packets. We do arrive this afternoon ready to exercise our duty. We welcome people who are joining us in chambers and are grateful, as always, to Community Television for broadcasting and streaming these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We have important items on our agenda, so we'll get right to work, which begins with the consent agenda. Do council members have questions or wish to take up any items separately? On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton, Emanuel?
Aye.
King Cade?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We open our business agenda with item seven, a resolution ordering the repair of sidewalk and curb and gutter according to state statute on 45 locations. We had a long presentation about sidewalk repair last evening. Do council members have questions regarding the resolution? Councilmember Strobel? Mm-hmm, okay. Questions for staff? There are no questions. So on a motion by Councilmember Tewalt, seconded by?
He's not present.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Wherever, oh, no, yeah, okay, sorry. Couldn't read my own handwriting there. On a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, item seven is moved and discussion is in order.
I was just going to propose an amendment to exclude the sidewalk on the, what do you call it? Yeah, on Bullis Court. Pass that around.
I'll second that. An amendment has been offered. Does, do you have a copy? Oh, it's coming, I guess. A motion to amend has been offered by Councilmember Strobel and seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. The amendment before us and on the screen defers sidewalk on all locations in Bullis Court. Questions or do you want to speak to your amendment? Councilmember Strobel?
I, I just, yes, speak to it. We listened to a lot of constituents last night and then city staff, and then talking to city, city staff again today. Just felt that this was the proper thing to do, given that these sidewalks haven't been in there since 2003, and there's a lot of drainage issues. Me personally, I think we've had some drainage issues on sidewalks over on another part of Princeton Valley where it costs the city a fair amount of money to try to, try to make those right. So if, if staff is not opposed to this, I just think that deferring would be the correct way to do it.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you. I, if it would be okay with Councilmember Strobel, I think it might be appropriate to add at the end of the sentence, the last sentence for, or due to topographical reasons so that there's a reason for the deferral.
I am okay with that.
A motion has been offered, a friendly, I guess, to add the words at the very end of the paragraph, "due to topographical reasons." The motion, the friendly has been accepted by the mover?
Thank you for asking, yes.
And the seconder? And does the body have any objection? That friendly is added to the motion to amend. And there being any further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I am pleased to support this this evening because I was very compelled by the topographical reasons of sidewalk deferral. As many folks know, I am very pro sidewalk in neighborhoods, and I also think that there are exceptions to the rule. And I don't think it's fair to citizens who would have a hardship on, especially in the harsh winter months of mitigating some of that water that might build up there. So I think it's important to listen to constituents and to honor that very real hardship come wintertime.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? The resolution is amended as noted. We're back to the resolution then. Any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
King Cade?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item eight on our business agenda is a resolution authorizing budget appropriations for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Solinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before you, it's a resolution authorizing second quarter budget adjustments, the first of which is $58,600 of appropriations to the Health Department's operating budget for various grants and donations. The second is an appropriation of $2,900 to the library's operating budget for various grants and donations. We'll take any questions.
I see no questions, and thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Von Haden, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item eight is moved, discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember King Cade?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have two ordinances for action tonight. The first is an ordinance rezoning property on north of LaSalle Street, adjacent to McKinley Road from TR 1A to R 1P, and to adopt a general development plan for single-family dwellings. Do council members have questions regarding this item from our presentation last evening? On a motion then by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item nine is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel?
I'm just excited about this development. I think anytime we have some available land in the, in the city where we can do some infill development, I actually think that's, that's good for the city. We're using existing infrastructure. And I think the, the developer stated pretty clearly that there's a big demand for this housing. So I'm, I'm very excited to see this development go forward. And I think, I think that the traffic concerns on McKinley and LaSalle will be worked out when it goes back to Plan Commission as well.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President King Cade. I think this was actually more of a question for Mr. Ivory. Was he the one who presented yesterday? Good afternoon, Mr. Ivory. Just wanted to ask something about the vote we're about to take and some of the things that we heard last night about the importance of forested land and green space, both to the developer and, and a comment that we heard last night. Wanted to ask you, do we have much in terms of history in asking or working with developers to actually set aside green space in a development like this? I think of a city out west that we're often compared to, Portland, Oregon, where they will often develop and leave a green space between develop, between homes and trails and things like that, and ask a developer to, to work with, you know, the public, public entities to do that. Is there anything like that that we could maybe think about for a project like this?
Well, we have in the past, on a voluntary basis, worked with the developers trying to reserve some green space. I guess an example would be out on West Ridge, way out on the far northwest side of the city, where we worked with the developer and they set aside land for a playground facility. But it wasn't a requirement of the, of the city. The city, we have at a couple times in the past presented parkland dedication ordinances to the council. I think we've gone through that process, I think, three times in the last 20, 25 years. And in each of those cases, the ordinance was not, not adopted for various reasons. So we don't have a requirement that, that occurs. But we have tried to work with the developers to try to set, try to set mostly the open space for, for small, small parkland. We do have the requirements, like in this platte here, where there's more than 20% slope that can't be disturbed. So we have those kinds of requirements.
And may I follow up? In this case, those, those areas are, are going to be private property, so it doesn't really leave it accessible for, you know, like people to walk trails in the ravines or anything like that.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
We have had other developments over by Otter Creek where the developer there donated or made that land accessible to the city for the public use too. So again, but that was on a voluntary basis.
Councilmember Mitchell? Thank you. I don't have a question. Sorry. I'm going to support this resolution as well. I think that the infill development aspect of this is very valuable. There's a, a range of prices, which I think is also good for the city. And there, we certainly have a need for single-family development. And I am persuaded by the good work of the City Engineers Office that the drainage issues are going to be taken care of and in fact, will perhaps help mitigate some of the drainage problems that already exist out there. So I'm happy to support this as well. Councilmember Biden?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Unfortunately, last night, for personal reasons, I couldn't make it. I was at a baseball game in the Twin Cities. The question I have for the city engineer, there shouldn't be, or for whoever it would be out there, the runoff issues that were the concerns. There is sufficient land and space to prevent and take care of those issues.
Not quite sure how to answer that. We believe so, and by the time plans are approved, there will be. At this point, the developer's talked about what his drainage concept is, and he's put out a layout that his engineer says will work. But I'm not going to get up here and say that it will work until I have at least seen what he submits.
Okay, but, but prior to your approval of the development agreement and the final documents?
That will all be in place, yes.
That will all be in place, okay.
And it's, it's not uncommon for a development to lose one or two lots in the process of going through this review to make sure the facilities are large enough.
Okay, that's just I wanted to make sure that, because again, I agree with the concept that this, for, as an infill development is very positive, but we also have to make sure we don't create more problems than we eliminate.
We don't want those phone calls either.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Thank you, Madam President. At the Plan Commission, the drainage issue was discussed at Great Lakes. And it was, in developments that are occurring adjacent or within, or that have land that is within the environmentally sensitive area with more than 20% slope, the DNR and the West Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission are involved in approving whatever plans that are, come forward. That being said, and a number of people on the Plan Commission that voted for this were somewhat impressed by the fact that those two agencies are going to be involved. Well, I'm more impressed with the quality of our engineers. And I think it's worth noting that I'm impressed with the quality of this builder. I've had experience with him building a home in my condo development on a sensitive ridge adjacent to the property that Mr. Ivory mentioned was part of the donation to the city for that park. I watched him build a development in Altoona on land that I, next to land that I use a lot, which is also on a environment- a lot, which is also on an environmentally sensitive ridge. And I know him to be knowledgeable and capable of building quality homes in a manner that is cognizant of the need to build them in a manner that those ridges are protected. And the fact that, that those three, I think, reasons, this should be supported, this should go forward.
Any further, just, oh, Councilmember Beaton?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I, you know, the thought of lost forested land for children to play on, like we heard last night and in some of the emails and comments that we've gotten, does make me sad for the city and for that particular neighborhood, but I, I see that this is private land that has been private for quite a long time, and so I, I think that, I also see that this is really needed in our city. The truth is, is that we need housing, and I think that, you know, this is a good, good option rather than, you know, sprawling, as we often see. So, I'll be supporting, though I, I am sad to see some forested land disappear, so.
Need further discussion? There being none of them, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Good luck with your development. Our next ordinance for action is one to amend the city code and consolidate stormwater and parcel grading requirements to conform with state requirements. Councilmembers have questions of Mr. Jensen from last night's presentation? On a motion, then, by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 10 is moved and discussion is in order? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Von Haden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. May I speak for the city council who thanks you, Mr. Jensen, for the, all the detail and the energy that went into improving our code of ordinances in this regard? And that brings to a close our actions for tonight. I do have three ordinances for introduction, and, oh, might I back up, please? I meant to thank Mr. Nick and his staff also for help in designing and defining the new stormwater code and making sure that legal expertise was applied well, which you always do. Thank you for that. There are three ordinances for introduction, which is my duty to read into the record. The first is an ordinance rezoning property located on the west side of Mary Place, south of Renee Drive, from TR-1A to R-2, for an existing duplex. A second ordinance for introduction is one amending table 10 of the code entitled Vehicles and Traffic and table sections related to parking restrictions, enforcement, and meter changes. And a last ordinance for introduction is an ordinance amending title three of the code entitled Revenue and Finance by creating chapter 3.40 entitled A Living Wage. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these items tonight? I see no such desire. Mr. Wuinzan's announcements are in order.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. Couple of brief announcements. Just a reminder, August 10th through 13th is the U.S. Open Chainsaw Sculpture Championship at Paul Bunyan Logging Museum in Carson Park. August 15th, from 2:00 to 7:00, Dabble Day, including the CVTC Mobile Manufacturing Lab and a Maker Party on Eau Claire Street. So, that's a, an activity being put on by the library, and we'll be closing a portion of Eau Claire Street for that activity. August 18th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the morning, is the Chamber Eggs and Issues. U.S. Chambers John Kirchner will be the speaker and provide an update on key federal issues and outlook for congressional activity this fall. And lastly, August 25th, at 7:00 in the evening, is a patio concert at Haymarket Landing featuring Eau Claire Bands, Dames, Idol Empress, and Heart Pills. There's no charge for that, but attendance is limited to the first 250 who show up. So, that's it.
Thank you. Sounds like a busy week. Announcements by councilmembers? None. There being no further business to come before this body, on a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Klinkhammer, we are adjourned without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call (715) 839-4912 or TDD (715) 839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at (715) 839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.